We come to you tonight just grateful for all that you do for us, Lord, that you take care of us, you love us, and Lord also you bless us. Lord, we just pray for the ones who might have had storm damage last night in our community. Lord, we just pray for them. And Lord, we just pray for our leaders, and we pray for our councilman and mayor. And Lord, as we work together tonight to get through our agenda. Lord, again, thank you so much for taking care of us, in Christ's name I pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge. I will pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Goldman, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Green?
President.
Mr. Lot?
Here.
All present but Mr. Prater.
Do we have a quorum, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, we do.
This meeting is now in session. Announcements, are there any announcements? Are there any comments relating to any item on the agenda? We have Mayor Clarence Hawkins there. Mayor, we're going to ask you to participate in the discussion to enlighten us. Do you mind holding your comments until we do the discussion? Is that okay with the councilman? Okay. All right. Resolution eighteen dash seventeen ninety-seven, a resolution authorizing, according to the mayor, to terminate the option to purchase real property entered into with BDT Housing Services Enterprises relative to obtaining, I'm sorry, relative to obligation set forth and an option to purchase agreement between former mayor Arthur Jones and BDT Housing Services Enterprises further provided with respect thereto. And we have a situation we had when we were doing the AT&T Tower. Then I just, we discovered that, that the land, and I don't, I didn't have a plat as to all that's being sold around the municipal center. But it would seem to conflict with the action that we took with, with AT&T. And I didn't, I was unaware of this until after that council meeting. And we have, do we have those papers for the council on all that we have? Did we, did anyone?
Sir, they have a copy.
Oh, it's in the packet. Okay, I haven't opened my packet yet. But if we would review what's in the packet, as my understanding, council.
You want me to address the mayor?
Yes, sir, I want you to conduct it, but we have Mayor Hawkins here, who was, who was the state director of USDA Rural Development at the time, I believe, and he has knowledge that we probably don't have. I think that, Mayor, can you, do you come to the microphone now, if that's okay? Is that okay with you? As, because there'll be questions when?
That's why I'm here.
Yeah. History.
If you would just let me?
Go ahead.
Present what we have, and then, of course, Mayor Hawkins can address whatever situations that may come up. Gentlemen, in your packet that you have today, it's several documents that are in there. They're not in the order that I prefer they be in, but I'm gonna ask you while working with me, I have them in the order that you have them now. We're gonna try to reshuffle them so that when I'm talking about it, you'll be following suit, okay? All right, oh, if you would flip through, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. I'm probably gonna take you all the way to the end, see if it's in there. Yeah, let's, let's try to go in reverse order. The last sheet you're gonna see is gonna say, "Resolution," dated March the twenty-ninth of two thousand and seventeen. I'll discuss that first, okay? If you can put that as your first item, and I apologize that it's not in order in the packet, I'm gonna try to put it in perspective for you. That's dated March twenty-ninth, okay? If you flip through, you're gonna see an email. It should be, it's gonna, the top of the page is gonna say, "Arthur Jones and Tracy Prince." They all sent her to Arthur Jones, city of, at cityofbasterd.com. It's gonna be one, two, it's gonna be like six pages into your packet. That's item number two, okay? Dated, oh, April the fifth of two thousand and sixteen. Y'all have it? And if you would, the first sheet that's in your packet should be a document, says fax cover letter, oh, from, to Doug Lawrence, from Mayor Jones. It's gonna be dated April the seventh of two thousand and sixteen. That should be this first document in your packet. Y'all have it? That's gonna be the next one, if you just, that's gonna be the third page, okay? The next thing you can see in your packet is gonna be a, a letter, an advisory letter, to Honorable Arthur Jones, from Doug Lawrence, City Attorney. It consists of three pages. The third page is just gonna be, oh, like a footer that's on the bottom of this page. The institution is an equal opportunity provider. Those three pages altogether, so that follows the, the previous document, which would've been that April the seventh document, okay? That's April eighth. This next page that you see, this, with eleven twenty-five fif, eleven twenty-five fifteen, I don't, I don't know where that's gonna fall in my discussion. That may have been something that was inadvertent in there, so right now, let's not worry about that page.
Which one was that?
That's the one that just has, this one, it says, "Signature line with Tracy Prince, Executive Director, eleven twenty-five of fifteen."
Got it.
I don't think that's relevant to this discussion, okay?
Well, we can X that one out.
You can X that one out, I'm not gonna be discussing that unless Mayor Hawkins wants to discuss that. Oh, the next thing that you're gonna see is gonna say, "Two thousand, two thousand and sixteen, real property information." That's gonna be a legal description of some property located on Cooper Lake and Greenwood Street. That's gonna consist of one page with a long legal description, that page, that's gonna be first. And you'll see a plat map, that's gonna follow it. Okay? Now, the two thousand and eighteen, real property information, you can let that follow the last document. And then, you're gonna see a, an email, oh, from Tracy Prince, to Shirley Stewart, CC and Mayor Arthur Jones, dated March the thirtieth of two thousand and seventeen at one twenty-two a.m. Go back to the beginning of your packet, that's gonna be the first item. You're gonna see just some, some just plat maps, not, well, it's not really, it's relevant but not relevant, so that's not, wherever you put it, doesn't matter, when I tell you to refer to the plat maps, refer to that. Then you're gonna see an option to purchase agreement, which is gonna consist of three It's gonna be like this, gonna start with this one page. The second page is gonna be, starting with, the title of said property is to be conveyed free and clear of encumbrances. Then the third page is gonna be the page what, which bears the signature on the bottom of Arthur Jones and Tracy Prince. Those three pages altogether, that's one document, okay? That's next, that's the last thing in your packet so far, okay? Then you're gonna see in your packet, well, that's a duplicate, the resolution, you know, we didn't do that first? Resolution is already there, okay? So the resolution, I'm sorry, the resolution is first, and then this email's gonna be second, okay? So, three twenty-nine, then three thirty. It's all, I'm trying to put it in date order for you. The rest of the pages in your packet is gonna be a duplicate. That's one additional page that you do not have in your packet, and, oh, I'll address it and we'll determine irrelevance as time would bear. And that's going to be that third page in that option agreement, which only has Tracy Prince's signature on it. I don't, I don't know if y'all have it, but it's the same document, which you're gonna see Arthur Jones and Tracy Prince's signature, but it's only with her signature on it, dated April the fifth, two thousand and seventeen, okay? So, oh, we'll get you all a copy of that, but we'll address it as time would permit. Oh, we're gonna, I guess, keeping with what you guys, gentlemen, remember, was discussed in the last meeting, I think, when AT&T was interested in leasing some property for the purposes of putting up a cell tower. Research was done, and it was determined a feasibility of placing it at the property in question, oh, the, and I don't wanna say that address wrong, the property that we're gonna discuss today, that's subject to the option agreement. When the research was done, it was located, and then that's when, I guess, we started researching, you know, what had happened with this property. I'll start with respect to the three twenty-nine document, which is the resolution that was executed on about that particular date by BDT Enterprise, I mean, BDT Housing Services Enterprises, whereby their particular organization or corporation decided that, well, they have to have board action in order for them to be able to engage in activities, contractual relations, just like this governing body has to have board action in order for it to engage in contractual relations. As you can recall, you've, you've dealt with a bunch of resolutions up here before, where it says, asking the council to authorize the mayor to be able to engage the services of this, or to contract with this, on and so forth. Same protocol with respect to the corporation. Well, this corporation, oh, and I'm gonna take you to the first date, which is March the twenty-ninth of two thousand and seventeen, enacted, I mean, embodied itself on that particular day, called a meeting, and I don't know if it was for the specific purpose, but one of the purposes in that meeting was to have this resolution signed. This resolution authorized BDT Housing Services Enterprises to enter into a contractual relationship with the City of Basterd with respect to nine acres of property which is subject to this discussion. On that particular date, and we can flip, it's all this resolution, it's their, it's their organization saying, "We want to go and engage into a contract with Basterd." The next document you're gonna look at is a document dated March the thirtieth of two thousand and seventeen, which is an email from Tracy Prince, dated, only, on Thursday, March the thirtieth, at one twenty-two a.m. The body of that email reflects that there was a meeting between then-mayor Arthur Jones and former mayor Clarence Hawkins with respect to this transaction. And I'll read it to you, which read and recite. Thank you so much, it was a pleasure meeting with you and Mayor Jones, as well as, you, Mayor Jones, as well as Mayor Hawkins. I have attached copies of the requested information and resolution for your, from our board. If you have any questions, please call, they provide the number. As stated before, we are waiting on NOSA to come out so that, and this is their company, BDT Housing and, oh, Service Enterprises can submit a pre-application package. We're going to contact SHIPO, whoever that acronym represents, of Louisiana. Be blessed, from Tracy Prince. Tracy Prince, as you can recall, was the executive director of BDP Enterprises. Well, this email presupposes that was a meeting that took place via telephone or otherwise between those two mayors and Tracy Prince with respect to contracting to purchase the property after an option period of three years. Oh, that's March the thirtieth of two thousand and seventeen. You can flip past that. The next document you're gonna see is dated April the fifth of two thousand and seventeen. And I am, I can only assume, I'm speculating, I can only assume that this email from Tracy to Mayor Jones was in connection with that option agreement that we're gonna discuss in a moment. And this document indicates, "Thank you and the City of Basterd for giving our organization the option to purchase the land. For the housing, there are some important items we need, well, we'll need to, we'll need in order to meet the deadline." I'm reading it just as it says, okay? "In April twelve, two thousand and sixteen." Could've been typed, I'm not sure. "The price was not clear, oh, on the amount of the sale. I put one hundred thousand dollars. Items needed, signed option agreement, and attached addendum for the statute in Louisiana stating the City of Basterd was certain right to sell property without public bidding to a nonprofit from the city attorney." That's dated April the fifth. Crucial about that is April the fifth. On, flipping to your next document, on April the seventh of two thousand and sixteen, Mayor Jones sent a fax cover letter, and I can only read what the comment reflects, 'cause I don't have that letter in my possession, saying, "Please review ASAP." It consists of twelve pages, to Doug Lawrence. Flipping to the next document is an advisory letter dated April the eighth of two thousand and sixteen, to Mayor Jones, from Doug Lawrence, addressing specifically, "BDT Housing Services Enterprises, option to purchase real estate." Now, I'm gonna summarize it for you, and I'll tell you the importance of the summary in a second. He says, "I have received and reviewed the option to purchase real estate. The option is executed, obligates, the option, if executed, obligates the City of Basterd to convey ownership via general warranty deed in exchange for payment of a hundred thousand dollars by BDT Housing Services Enterprises to the City of Basterd." Essentially, Mr. Lawrence was suggesting that he had received the option to purchase agreement, and he had reviewed the same, and he was given advice to the mayor with respect to that particular request. I'm assuming that was sent the day before, on April the seventh of two thousand and sixteen. In this particular advisory letter, Attorney Lawrence cautioned the mayor on several things, but more specifically cautioned him on, there's a portion of the contract that says that, at the end of the contract, and so that you can understand how an option contract works. What is the sum and substance of this document is that this company, BD, BDT Enterprises, Housing Enterprises, was gonna pay the City of Basterd ten dollars a month for thirty-six months. And at the end of that thirty-six month period, they would be granted the option to purchase the property for a hundred and thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. Now, inside of that, that option agreement, as you all, I know, we've talked about this many times, you all like to know, can we get out of, can we get out of things of that nature? If you would look at the last page of the option agreement, more specifically, paragraph eight of that option agreement, it sets forth the terms and it sets forth the parameters in there. Oh, they say, "The option may be exercised by the buyer at any time while the offer herein remains in force, by mailing, telegraphing, or delivering in person a written notice of acceptance of the offer herein to City of Basterd and have Mayor Arthur Jones, at two oh two East Jefferson and the City of Basterd, Moraus Parish, State of Louisiana." This particular paragraph, the part, that first part of the paragraph just says that anytime within that three-year period from April the fifth of two thousand and seventeen, which would expire April the fifth, two thousand and twenty, oh, by just communicating, and they told you the different ways in which they can communicate, they could purchase this property, okay? The next paragraph talks about the irrevocability of this agreement, and that means that you can't take it back. Revoked, you can take it back, irrevocable, so you cannot take it back. It says, "This offer herein shall remain irrevocable for a period of thirty-six months from the date hereof, and shall remain in full force and effect for three years from the date hereof unless earlier terminated by itself." Y'all following me? I'm on paragraph eight, that second full paragraph, after those lines. I'm sorry. The third page of this agreement, where it has Arthur Jones and Tracy Prince's signature? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we was over.
Y'all with me?
I was off on another.
Okay. The first section deals with, that paragraph eight is what I just read. Y'all with me? That just says, oh, as I said before, that the option to purchase is gonna remain in effect for thirty-six months, and that's from the date of the signing of this document, which is April the fifth, two thousand and seventeen, through April the fifth of two thousand and twenty, okay? Now, oh, the second paragraph says, "This offer shall remain," y'all with me? This is what I'm talking about, you know, oh, we've all heard the terminology, and we've discussed it before, how can we get out of the contract? Well, this particular provision of this option agreement indicates that the City of Basterd would be locked in for a three-year period. However, BDT Enterprises can get out, I mean, can, can execute that option by paying a hundred thousand dollars, and the nine acres would be theirs. That's the sum and substance of what that first paragraph says. The second one says that it's irrevocable for a three-year period unless earlier terminated by the seller. Now, here's the thing. They say, "The seller may terminate this offer at any time after the thirty, after," this is the crucial part, "after the thirty-six month period." At, or, any time, let me read this exactly. "The seller may terminate this offer at any time after the thirty-six months, irrevocable period, provided herein by giving the buyer a ten-day notice of intentions to terminate at the address of the buyer." So, what that particular portion of the agreement says is that after thirty, after two thousand and twenty, the City of Basterd can say, "Hey, I want to terminate it." Don't sound so bad so, so far. Next sentence is the kicker. Acceptance of this option by the buyer within ten days after such notice is received by the buyer shall constitute a valid acceptance of the option. So you can say you want to terminate, City of Basterd, but if I tell you I want to accept, you're locked.
Right.
You follow me? It's buyer-friendly, you know, but I, it's, it's buyer-friendly. Now, I can take some other parts of this contract, but that stuff that Doug was addressing in there, but that's the crucial part that I wanted you all to pay attention to, okay? The crucial part of this option agreement. And I'll, I'll tell you more about that, you know, in a minute as well. But that's this document that I want you all to look at. Now, oh, let's get past April the eighth, gentlemen, if you would, those three-page advisory letter from Attorney Lawrence? And that's the, that's the sum and substance of the agreement, and the last portion is this agreement. Now, here's the thing. In the advisory letter, there's no, there's never, that wasn't any, well, the dates are crucial. The contract itself, as you can see, was executed on April the fifth, two thousand and seventeen. The request for advice was made two days after the contract was signed. Can you say it again?
Say that again, say that.
Okay. The option to purchase agreement, the one y'all just looking at, look at the date on it. Says April the fifth, two thousand and seventeen.
Right.
If you go a few pages back in your packet, you'll see the fax cover letter that sent the twelve documents to Attorney Doug Lawrence?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay.
That is dated April the seventh, two days after the contract is already signed.
So, how you giving advice?
Ah, well, hang on, just work with me. I don't know, I can't speculate. If I, but the long and short of it is, at the point in time where Attorney Lawrence was given, according to this document, a request to advise or to review ASAP, and he did the very next day in writing, that contract was already executed on April the fifth. Now, the document that you all do not have in your packet is this document, and I'll pass it around, can I approach you for a second?
So, the contract was filed, it was?
I'm sorry. Well, this, I'll pass it to you, Mr. Lot, first. It's, it's the same thing you have, but it only has Tracy Prince's signature on it.
No, uh, but this is.
It's the same, the last page of that option agreement, but it only has hers on it, so I can only assume that she sent it there, but I do see one with his signature on it as well. With me thus far? Y'all with me thus far? All right, now, here's, here's my thoughts. If you all can recall, more specifically, Mr. Lot and Mayor Pro Tim Moore, you all have been here a little longer than Mr. Green and Mr. Prater, who's absent today.
I've been here.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, certain things have to have this body's approval to do. The charter specifically states that you cannot sell property without getting authorization of this body. You gentlemen?
Right.
Well, if you look at, oh, y'all have your smartphones out, oh, yeah, I know y'all do, Mr. Green. April of two thousand and seventeen, oh, April of two thousand and seventeen, the, the date of the first recorded communication that you all are dealing with was April the twenty-ninth of two thousand and seventeen, which would've been a Saturday, okay? Oh, April thirtieth would be the date of the, I'm sorry?
I can't pull up my calendar.
That's, just trust me, take my word, I'm not trying to trick you, I promise you. All right. April the twenty-ninth would've been a Saturday. That would've been the first document in your package whereby this board, not this board, but BDT Housing Services Enterprises convened for the purposes of creating this resolution. March, did I say March, March, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong month, I'm sorry. March the twenty-ninth was a Thursday, was a Wednesday, was a Wednesday. They convened on that Wednesday, got authorization to engage into contractual relations with the City of Basterd. The very next day, Thursday, is when, oh, the email came through at one twenty-two a.m. thanking Mayor Hawkins and Mayor Jones for a meeting that, I'm assuming, took place on the same day, their board actually on the twenty-ninth, okay? This board, I'm sorry, right, that email. This board meets on which Thursday of the month?
Second.
Second Thursday of the month, which would've been on the, oh, the next meeting would've been on April the thirteenth of, oh, two thousand and seventeen. I don't know the urgency, you know, but I did ask Ms. Goldman, and she can attest, to research whether or not there had been any resolutions of this body, and by you, the look on y'all's face, apparently y'all never saw a resolution with respect to this property.
I can't remember.
She researched it, oh, in the month of April, and before and after, and there was no resolutions before this body authorizing then-mayor Arthur Jones to engage in contractual relations with BDT Housing Services Enterprises.
So, that make what he did, it was?
Well, we're get, we're getting there.
Okay.
We're getting there. Okay. I'm only saying that, 'cause those are the crucial dates, okay? March twenty-ninth, when that resolution was created, March the thirtieth, when the email came in regarding, at one twenty-two a.m., April the fifth, the date that the option agreement was signed, April the seventh, when Mayor Jones asked Attorney Lawrence to review ASAP, April eighth, when Attorney Lawrence responded back to Mayor Jones. And I guess, two weeks ago, when, three weeks ago, when we started looking into it and determined that it's not leveraged, but as an option. I did ask Ms. Goldman whether or not those ten dollars per month had been paid, and she said no, correct?
That's correct.
They haven't?
Has not been paid.
That's right.
So, they go to the council, have, or was this a confusion?
The resolution that's before you all today is the resolution, oh, asking you all to authorize, oh, Mayor Cotton to do what's necessary to try to get out of this option agreement. You following me? Now, that's my thoughts in a nutshell. I mean, some old dates that may be critical, but only for purposes of speculation. But, oh, that's all the question, all the comments I have with respect to the package that we received. I can answer any question that you may have, but, oh, only thing I did not discuss in detail was with respect to what Attorney Lawrence's opinion letter, or advisory, or letter, or memo, memorandum to the mayor was. He was pretty much telling the mayor, "Look, there are some pitfalls in this option agreement." You know, specifically, he didn't address the fact that you can't, you know, the charter says you have to go to a public sale. He didn't address the fact that a resolution needs to be brought before the council and get the council authorized Mayor Jones to do what he's gonna do.
The law, right?
Correct. Yeah. None of that, none of that was addressed, and it's in your packet, you have it. What he addressed was the warranty deed op, oh, situation whereby, at, in this option to purchase agreement, oh, what the City of Basterd was purporting to obligate itself to do was to provide, oh, BDT Enterprises at the end of the contractual, at the end of the option period, with a, a clear title to this property. Attorney Lawrence said, "Look, I'm not qualified to do that. You need to get a, a property lawyer in, to look at it, to go research it, to see, you know, whether or not there's any encumbrances, or whether or not we can even give clear title, and if we can't, that's some, oh, some risks, some financial risks to City of Basterd for not being able to do that." That's the sum and substance of Attorney Doug Lawrence's opinion letter to the mayor.
It was a buyer-friendly contract, not a seller-friendly one, there.
Well.
And read and do it.
Well, I would say so.
Ms. Pierre?
I would rather be the buyer than the seller.
I got a question. If we never approved it, then it's not valid, so why do we need to vote on it, if the council never approved it?
Well, what, what's here today is an attempt to do what we know we have to do, which is Mayor Cotton can't run off on that island and start doing things. You follow me? Oh, I can't run out, well, I mean, I can, 'cause I, well, at any rate, no, I can't, because I have to do what's in the best interest of this council. Now, if the council's telling me, "Leave it alone, leave it alone." But, oh, what this resolution is, is you can read it specifically, it said, "Authorized the mayor to take whatever action, actions necessary to try to rescind or revoke this particular agreement." Now, if you're asking me legally, how do we attack it, you know, the same things I told you before, I would suggest that Mayor Jones didn't have the authority to do so. I would suggest no resolution came before this body granted him the authority, you know, I would suggest a host of other things, you know, that, oh, or would attempt to get us out of this non-payment up to ten dollars, I mean, whatever the situation may have been.
Been paid, but followed.
They have not, but here's the thing, there's nowhere in the contract that says that that's a breach.
If they don't pay the ten dollars?
The only way you can terminate is after the three years, and it doesn't give you basis for termination.
And the question, the question that I had when I asked Mr. Pierre to look at these documents was that the sale could be annulity. The sale could be challenged by a citizen or anyone after the fact, and I don't want to be looking up in a whole, you know, from, from a whole thirty-foot pit, and some smart citizen invoked the courts to say that this sale is annulity after considerable investment on the part of, and effort on the part of the city and the investment. after considerable investment on the part of, and, and effort on the part of the city and the investors and the other people that, you know. Um, so I just don't believe that it would be legal.
Can we do this before we go into further? Can we get a background for the reason why, why, from Mayor Hawkins?
Mayor Hawkins, you're welcome to come up and speak. Yes.
Can I say this for Mayor Hawkins, speak just the last thing on what Doug Lawrence said? Okay, in the second to the last, oh, paragraph. When, when he said, well, yeah, 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 exactly.
May or may not.
Oh, well, the third last paragraph, he said, "The city should not execute any agreement to bind itself to undertake any unknown obligation imposed on it under the option unless it is prepared to face indeterminate risks." Right.
Yeah, I heard it was right there.
Well, uh, we, I did not know, uh, Mayor Hawkins reminded me that I'd met the gentleman who's involved in this, but when they said the property out by the municipal center, I did not make the connection to the, the land immediately around the municipal center. Yeah, well, I, uh, you know, you know, I, I have feelings, uh, if they came before this body today and talked about low-income housing right next to a park and daycare centers and stuff, I'd have resolutions and want the, Mayor Hawkins, you can come up, please, sir, and enlighten us on whatever, you know, but, but the history, uh, I just don't know, and we couldn't dig up. I did watch all of the videos, the council videos, from, uh,
We went to 2014.
We went all the way back to 2014, and we could not find, uh, a resolution for this. Mayor Hawkins, it's great to, uh, see you here. You were complimented by Dr. Castillo today in Monroe at, uh, at a dinner, Nova Dinner, and she complimented you on blazing the trail for many of the things that they're doing at USDA. You weren't there, but, uh, we enjoyed those comments from you, sir, and we're honored to have you here.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mayor, Board of all the persons, members of the staff, thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity to speak. This is a project, uh, it's a farm labor housing project that BDT Housing is attempting to, uh, to complete. Ms. Prince started applying for this project before I left Rural Development USDA. My term with USDA ended on January 20th of 2017, when Mr. Obama's term ended, I was a presidential appointee. So when I came home, I continued to assist her in, in the project. The history of that project is the City of Bastrop owns a significant of the green space between the municipal center and Greenwood, fronted on the south by Moller and on the north by Cooper Lake Road. There is a cutout in there, and I brought Ms. Goldman a copy of the plaque, probably that Mr. Pierre was referring to, that shows the overall property in that area, including the cutout piece that's owned by the Judge Woodrow Wilson family. We started, she started applying for this option several months before the dates that Mr. Pierre mentioned. And I'm sure that everything that he told you was correct about the documents, the emails and all of, all of that. We in good faith, the City of Bastrop and its officers, accepted the document that we received with the signature on it as a legitimate document. And we have pursued and are pursuing, to the extent Mr. Cotton, Mayor Cotton mentioned that he mentioned, he met, uh, the consultant, we've hired a consultant out of North Dakota, who came to Louisiana back in March, and he came to Bastrop to see the property, and, uh, we met in the parking lot, because this was an easily identifiable place. My son happened to be home during that time, and I said, "Well, why don't you ride with me today, because I'm gonna be showing Tom Andrews, who's the consultant, around." So when we came to City Hall, we came inside and came into the mayor's office, and I want you to meet the mayor, so he can be aware of what's going on. We came in and waited, and, uh, Ms. Kennedy greeted us, Mr. Parker was in the office, and the mayor and his staff were in a meeting, and she said, "It'll be a few minutes," and the mayor and Ms. Lenore came out, and we greeted and all the rest of that, and we went in and spent some time there. And in fact, on the mayor's Facebook page is a picture of my son and the mayor there, and he gave all kinds of accolades, and we appreciate that. So where I am is because the chief executive and chief administrative officer, the official representative of the City of Bastrop, signed that document with whatever the positives and negatives are. Because he signed that, we have proceeded. When Mr. Tom Andrews left here, he went to Alexandria, to the State Office of Rural Development USDA, and met with Mrs. Bible from the National Office in Washington, D.C. Based on the fact that we had that document, Ms. Prince and her staff came from Mississippi, and we all went to Alexandria to further meet and deliberate and get the regulations straight as to how this was to proceed. We've contacted engineers, in fact, Denver Engineering has, Engineering has been approached, we have an architect, we have accountants, the SHIPO, S-H-I-P-O, that you referred to, State Historic Preservation Officer, Office, which is something that's necessary. Sandra, Ms. Goldman, we go through this, not we go through, but we've go, we've gone through that procedure on any project that we do. So progress has been made. I, I, I fully understand where you're coming from, is that the council didn't approve it, and it didn't go through proper procedure, but that was out of our bailiwick. It was beyond our scope. We followed procedure and applied, talked to, sent documentation, met with the mayor and, and at that time, and told him what was available and what we were gonna do. We have demographic studies to show that there is a shortage of housing for farm laborers. Farm laborers are not just people who work in row crops, but people who work in conagra and in any area of agriculture would be eligible to live in these properties. We realize the proximity to the park, but I would, I would be an elitist if I would say that a low-income subsidized property would be a detriment to the park, because there's a property complex there already. It would be an asset to the community, centrally located, and I think, uh, the project is gonna cost three to four million dollars, three to five million dollars, in fact. There will be roads and streets, and as is the requirement, the streets, roads, drainage, water, all the utilities would have to meet the parameters of the City of Bastrop, going along with all of those codes. So, I, I, Ms. Prince still doesn't know this, that this is going. She is in Tulsa, she's been texting me because we have something else going on. She's in Tulsa, Oklahoma, she's a, she's, she's a cancer survivor, sort of. She's at Cancer Centers of America, she flew up the other day to do some scans. So I haven't told her that this meeting is going on, because this is gonna be devastating. We just had a meeting with the State Office in Alexandria today about the same project. So we're in a quandary that we have invested thousands of dollars in this based on the fact that the chief official, the person who signs documents, okayed this process. Mr. Moore mentioned an interesting situation. And I don't know if this is rescinding or not, but how can you revoke something that in a way was not put in place? And secondly, if this had not been discovered, whatever it was that opened up this, this Pandora's box, would the city have accepted the $100,000 for the property? And going on, and we would have built the facility? So, I, I, I'm in, I'm in a quandary as, as to, as to how that situation happened. And, and as I said, I, I thought we were doing due diligence when I brought Mr. Andrews by and introduced him to the mayor and told him what we were going on and what, what the project was all about. Ms. Goldman and I have been in contact with it, and she, in fact, she called me because she couldn't find the documents, and we had Ms. Prince fax it, I think, to you, and I brought the plat, the plaque up, so nobody's trying to pull anything. Now, speaking to Mr. Pierre about the, uh, the option, Ms. Pierre, this is the same option that the City of Bastrop has with BDT Housing on the lots of Marcus and History in Hickory that was just done back in April. The same option with the same caveats in there.
I believe, though, I believe that came before the council, and council authorized us to do that.
No, no, no. I'm not saying that it didn't come before the council, but Mr. Pierre was talking about the no backdoor out kind of thing, and being user-friendly, and, uh, buyer friend, seller friendly, whatever. So this is the same document, and I know you would have appreciated hearing that before, back in April, when, when you approved that, that other option as well.
Mayor Hawkins, let me, let me interject here. Uh, you came to us asking for a three-year option on that property, and I stated to you that we had someone interested in it, and that you wanted to get a three-year option, and, and because you had some prior plans for that. And, and I stated that we would go, I would recommend to the council that we go two years to allow you to do what you needed to do.
And we agreed.
And even because, uh, two years is not so long, and the, the proximity, the, the differences in my mind is that that has been there forever, and we talked about 20 years ago building a house there, remember, we got $250,000 grant, I believe, to build five houses, you remember that?
Alexandria came and then they, they canceled it.
Yeah, they canceled. And that same property's been lying dormant for like 30 years. The difference in my mind was that I was not afraid of whatever the, the strong buyer's agreement, uh, said, I read it, but I wasn't disturbed because I had confidence in you, sir, and, and we want something there. Now, I told you that a person came wanting to put a business that stretched, that enco, that encompassed all of that property where the Allen pit stop is, and, and the, uh, dry cleaners and the, all of that, the old easily cleaners and that. But I felt that, uh, that you had something in mind for that residential part on Hickory, and we weren't afraid of the two years there. Now, I stated, uh, and you alluded to this in your conversation, that, that, uh, that I, I went back through all those tapes. What disturbed me is that I didn't see any public input in the process. Uh, we've got a daycare center right behind the municipal center. Uh, they didn't weigh in, and, and we've got children playing, and I was not alluding to that wherever there's low-income people, there's gonna be crime and all of that. That's not my illusion, but I said, I was stating that the people needed to know what's gonna come, more housing, and let the people know with public hearing in full, and I didn't see any of that process. That's not your fault, and it's not Ms. Prince's fault. I'm saying that, uh, this administration would have done it differently. In fact, this administration would not have, would not have advised on, on land-locking our, our, uh, biggest park and our most popular park to take out nine acres, because we would land-lock it, especially based upon what's happened in Sterlington, whether we're in competition with those ball fields. So, you know, I would not have supported, uh, giving up that prime land when there's other land in the City of Bastrop acreage that Steve Perry is doing, uh, just did 38 houses, and the process of doing 38 more. Uh, and there's acres clear, 23 acres south in the south-central part of the city, and to, to, to land-lock that, um, our biggest park, to limit it to three ball fields, or maybe four, different sizes, we can't be competitive. So that's the context with which I was speaking. I was not trying to be derogatory toward, toward, uh, any kind of income, but people need to be able to, to weigh in through some sort of public hearings. I think it would, even if it's not required, I think it's proper to let people know, hey, this is coming in your community, or this is, and I, I looked back to 2014, and I didn't see any of that process, so, uh,
Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I'm not challenging, I'm not challenging anything that happened. My point is, we did our procedure, we did our due diligence, we went through. Mr. Pierre, do you see anything in there that BDT violated in applying or requesting?
Well, what I, only thing I see from, from BDT is the resolution authorizing them to
Request, request, we, we requested the option, right?
When you say, you were with BDT?
I'm, I'm, I'm taking ownership, yeah.
Okay, all right, fine. Well, only thing I see from BDT is, one, the resolution authorizing them to be able to engage in contractual relationships with the City of Bastrop to purchase with, after the option, there's, uh, or doing option, that nine acre tract. And I see with, from respect to BDT, an email reflecting there was a meeting with you and Mayor Jones, uh, on the day after, the day of, the day after this particular, uh, resolution was executed.
My, my question, my question, though, is
Did y'all do anything?
BDT made a request for an option to the City of Bastrop. That, that has to be assumed, or this process wouldn't have taken place. Was there any violation in the way that we, that, that the, the request was made and then the action?
Well, what I, what I see that was inappropriate was that, one, uh, the charter doesn't allow a sale to be done by, hold on, hang a second, I'm trying to respond to you. The charter doesn't allow the sale of property absent a public bid, and specifically doesn't authorize the mayor to execute an agreement binding the city without council, uh, approval by way of resolution. That's what I see that as inappropriate.
And let me add one.
That, that, my, my question was, did BDT Housing do anything inappropriate in the process of this process?
Mr. Mayor Hawkins, let me state this. The reason I called Mr. Pierre is because, uh, honest to God, I didn't know who BT, uh, BDT was.
BDT, something.
I had no idea that it was a gentleman who came down from, okay, I had no idea. But when I looked and I saw that they sent a resolution authorizing their representative to sign, and they didn't get one back, they should have known, any reasonable person would have known, I need a resolution. I don't, I don't see how anyone can fathom that we don't need a resolution from the board or from, uh, Ms. Prince got one to, to authorize her to get in this, and I can't see how anybody who's done business for 10 minutes would have not expected to have a resolution.
Did?
Mayor, can I interject one second?
No, no, we're not here to settle that, sir. We're, we're not accusing, we're not accusing.
So, so where, where I am with this, if this body decides to rescind, revoke, or whatever, what is this body prepared to do to compensate BDT Housing and?
Mayor Hawkins, we can't, we can't answer that right now. We, we, we can't answer that, but my problem is, I believe that this, this, this deal is annulity because it doesn't, it violates the charter. From the city's standpoint, I think it's annulity. I'm not, we're not here to split hairs with who BDT
And I, my, my question is, if this body decides to make this null and void, and the document was signed by the previous administration, and BDT Housing acted in good faith, just as anybody does who responds to action dictated by the City of Bastrop, acting in good faith that whatever they get from a document signed, that that is the legitimate authorized statement from the City of Bastrop, which we did, and we incur cost, where does that leave us?
Nobody's, I, I, that's a valid question, Mayor Hawkins, but, but we're not here to try that. We're not here to go through that. We're, we're here to say, is this, is this document legal? That's the question that I have. Is the document that was executed by the City of Bastrop that seems to be in clear violation of the charter, is it legal? That was my question to Mr. Pierre when, before we started the research, and, uh, you know, when I got the documents, said, "Mr. Pierre, please."
Oh, and I guess we, what I did not point out, uh, and I direct you all to the April the 5th email, the date that the document was executed. Gentlemen, the April 5th email, point your attention to it, please. If y'all want, April the 5th email, the very last sentence. April 5th email, the very last sentence, this is a, this is an email from Tracy Prince. And I guess I'm trying to address, uh, Mayor Hawkins' representation with respect to good faith. Tracy Prince said, "Item needed." Signed option agreement and attached addendum for the statute in Louisiana stating that City of Bastrop reserves the right to sell property without public bidding to a nonprofit. So Tracy Prince should have anticipated getting, she should have anticipated getting something saying that, one, this property can be sold without a public bid, because the charter requires such. So I don't know, you know, uh, if it was my company going forward, I would be a little reluctant to start investing monies knowing that I have not gotten it the proper way. Now, to say that it's signed by the chief executive officer of the city, Now, to say that it's signed by the chief executive officer of the city does not necessarily make it a valid contract. Because if you don't have the authority to do something, you don't have the authority to do it. I can put my name on, on a document binding Mayor Cotton to pay a million dollars to First National Bank. Does that make Mayor Cotton obligated to do so? So the long and short of it, I mean, this is, this is an argument that if it gets to that, we'll deal with that in the court of law across the street or wherever. But the long and short of what I'm suggesting to you gentlemen today is that when this email was, when this email was transmitted on April the 5th, 2016, which was the email of the purchase agreement, I'm assuming with Tracy Prince's signature only, before the signature of Arthur Jones was placed on it, sent back to her. She knew in this email that that's not all she needed. She clearly, if she's, if she through as the chief executive officer for BDT Housing Enterprises has engaged in contractual relations with municipalities in the past, she knows that there are charters. Especially when you're dealing with a home road charter, the city with a home road charter, she knows that you can't just buy this land in violation of the charter. So she said, give me a paper. Now, when she sent us back everything that she had, nothing in her packet had anything like an addendum from Doug Lawrence saying otherwise. More specifically, Doug Lawrence addressed his issues on April the 8th after he was given the fax request for memorandum from Arthur Jones, and he didn't even address that. Only thing he addressed was, look, well, you know what he addressed. I showed you that in, in his memo. So the long shot of it is, you know, he didn't address, well, you know, you know, you have to do this. You know, and it's nothing in her packet came back saying that she had got such a letter from Doug Lawrence. So, I mean, what we, what the resolution is here for today is to authorize the mayor, you know, to take action with respect to this contract. Now.
And, and, and councillor, the decision is, do we continue knowing that we have flaws? Do, do we, do we uphold our fiduciary duty to do what's constitutional and what's authorized under the charter? Do we do that? That's the choice we have. Do we continue with something that I believe is annulity? You know, no, I've never engaged in a, in a contract with a, an entity. You know, you've got sole proprietorships, partnerships and corporations. We are a political subdivision. And I can't fathom not having a resolution authorizing the chief executive office to, to engage in, in, in a, and I think that that's across the board. I think any reasonable person would expect resolutions. The company provided one.
Even that, Mayor, you still would have to deal with whether or not you would go against the, the letter and spirit of the charter which mandates that it's a sale of land and it should be a public bid. So you're suggesting you would take anybody, what if Joe Blow Company over here says, look, I'd like to bid on that land? You're gonna just sell it without a bid? The charter said you need to bid. So I mean, the long and short of it is, you know, what's, what's attempted by way of this resolution is asking you all as the governing body to sit back and try to right a wrong. Now, whether or not this body will come back later and do it right and sell and do the option, that's up to you.
And that's, and that's a possibility.
Right, but I'm just saying with respect to what has taken place, you know, on April, the March the 29th and March the 30th, and more specifically on April the 5th of 2017, by Arthur Jones putting his name on that document without council approval, without a public bid, it runs afoul to the process of the charter.
So you're saying there's, there's two things wrong with this whole, whole thing. First of all, we didn't sign, the board did not sign.
Resolution.
We didn't sign the resolution and then it didn't go to effect.
Well, what I'm saying specifically, Mr. Lock, is what you alluding to, one, there should have been an action by this body. And this action by this body authorizing the mayor to engage into contractual relationships with whomever. And I, I think it probably should have said whomever the right bid is. And it may have been only one bid.
And then we didn't bid and then.
Right, and it wasn't bid. And I don't think, I, I don't think that you all ever let Mayor Cotton sign a contract without you all giving him the authority to do something.
And we should have on this one.
Does, does this mean that?
That's what I'm talking about. The council, we hadn't, we didn't see this before now.
I agree. And we've checked, we've checked the minutes from all, did we not, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, twice.
There was no bid and no resolution.
Yes, sir.
Let, let, let me, can I clarify something? I think it's well accepted that there was no resolution signed, brought to this body that was signed by this body. That, that's, that's not a debatable issue. That, that's an established fact. But I, I'm, I'm going from another perspective. Because we plan to do a lot of business in Bastrop, finding abandoned properties and lots that could be made available and build houses on them for, and be back on the tax roll and clear up the blight and all the rest of that. I mentioned the property on Hickory and Marcus. The same form was used there. Should we expect, even though the council approved it, that you might withdraw and say you gotta go out for bid, Mr. Pierre, as you just said?
What, what I say specifically is that the charter mandates that any action with respect to the sale of property shall be by public bid and any actions authorizing the chief executive officer, i.e. the mayor, to engage in contractual resolution, I mean contractual arrangements, has to be by way of board resolution.
So what about the bid piece?
Well, I think, let me, let me, let me just, let me just state this. The bid piece doesn't have anything to do with the question of whether this is illegal.
No, that's, that's, that's given.
And we're, yeah, we're just, we're just dealing with this right now. And, and we know that there are provisions for nonprofits to be able to do things that's in, that's in the, in, in public policy. You know, every, every public body should have public policy. And, and our public policy states that we can do things, I believe, with nonprofits that's in the best interest. And that's what we did with, with the property on, is it Marcus?
Marcus and Hickory.
Yeah, Marcus and Hickory. It's in our best interest to do that and we decided to do it. Now, now, that was a 24-month and, and it, the difference is, it got this board's approval. Okay, that's the difference that's founded. It was done properly. We brought it before this body and this body passed a resolution to enter into the, the agreement with. And I didn't know, is that, is that a BD? BDT, is that BDT also? I never looked at the organization. I just, you made the request and I closed my eyes and signed because we know you. And, and we want something to be done with that. This is a different situation where there was no resolution. That's the only question before this council. Is there a resolution? Was it done legally? If there's not a resolution, it's not legal. It's annulity in my mind. And that's what alarmed me and I, I called our attorney in and said, hey, this looks like annulity. Because, and I didn't have any idea who BDT was. No idea that it was the same, same company that you talked about with, with Marcus and Hickory. But this was a, a, I found a 2016 April date and before, for 12 months. And I found that before that, a day or two before that 12-month expired, I found another option signed and I couldn't find a resolution. And I, I know I can't sign an option to sell land, say at the airport, without coming before this body and say, we got 40 acres in excess at the airport that someone wants to buy. And I'm gonna sign an option. And I can't fathom anyone believing, receiving that, that have done business thinking that that option is valid without a resolution from this body. I just can't fathom it. So the question, the question is.
One of the things, Mr. Mayor, is that people trust the credibility of the city of Bastrop. With this 100-year, 150-year plus, when somebody, some official from the city of Bastrop signs a document, that can be taken to the bank. In fact, people do take it to the bank. That's, this document was taken to the federal bank to be assurance that the property was there and, and available for this loan to be made. So, the, so if, I hope that this isn't the beginning of reversing actions that are taken by a council later on when there is a commitment that has been made and expectations are being held. I, I will have no choice but to relay the message and we will have to do a grounding stop on a multimillion-dollar project. Somebody is gonna have to pay for the costs that have been incurred based on the faith and trust in the city of Bastrop and its authority. Internally, that's your internal problem about whether it was done right and what, what action you wanna take. But your credibility is gonna be put at risk with, well, for sure with real development USDA. Because they're gonna say, well, this document from the city of Bastrop, from the mayor at that time, assured that property was available and we're making our assets available to them. What kind of credibility do they have? So actions have consequences. You can say, well, somebody should know better, sir, know better. But if people stop trusting in the word of the city of Bastrop, then what else do you have?
Mayor Hawkins, I appreciate your comments.
Mayor Hawkins, we appreciate you coming tonight. My question is this, councillor. What's left hanging out here for discovery that would tip this case one or the other if we had to go to court with it? And we need, before, before we vote, are we, are we, do we need to do it tonight? Or have we, do we need a little more time to just?
Let me tell you what you're up against. Let's just deal with the elephant in the room. We have a mayor who had just lost in a runoff. And we have a former mayor for 15-plus years. Engaging into contractual relations which both of them who read the charter should know that you can't do it that way. You have another meeting that's coming up on April the 13th of 2017. Bring it before the council. It's that simple. Bring it before the council. Let you all decide whether or not you want to engage. What's the rush? Nothing is built on the property now. You got a three-year option. What's the rush? Now, here's the rub. If you don't move quickly, they come and drop the $100,000, then they're gonna say, well, you know, we locked you in. Now, I'm, I'm assuming if this board says today, you know, oh, oh, we're gonna authorize the mayor to do what he, he needs to do. He's gonna tell him, I need to stay here tonight and start working. You follow me? And doing something to try to stop this. If that's not your aim, now, you have to, if nothing else, protect your governing document. You have to protect your governing document. Your charter is your constitution. I'm not saying we don't have love for Mayor Hawkins.
This is not about me, please.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is this. You know, what has been purported to you all the day is that, look, if y'all pull the plug, y'all might owe me some money, our company some money. You know, if you're looking at it that way, you're looking at it the wrong way because that way you're telling yourself, I'm gonna forget about the charter, the document that governs us. The document that tells us how we should operate. And you're gonna say, notwithstanding that, I will allow this transaction to go forward. Now, I'm not telling you what you should do with BDT Enterprises, we respect this property at a later date. But what I am suggesting to you as your attorney is that you need to take some action to protect your document.
I agree. We'll do the same thing if Mayor Cotton wants to do that. You're gonna be willing to take action, so we'll do the same thing here.
Well, the other piece of it is very important, I think, and that's the fact that not, to let the public know. Let our constituents know what's going on.
And that's the reason why you have a bid process too, gentlemen. There's a reason for the bid. Cause you wanna be fair to anybody who wants to invest. Somebody else may wanna put a housing project up there, offer you a one-year option and pay you $500,000. I don't know. I don't know the value of it. I didn't do a study to determine the, the appraised value of that property. Only thing I'm telling you right now is this, there was an action that was taken on April the 5th. The request for an attorney opinion was made. Before the attorney can give an opinion, a document was signed by the mayor without the authority of this council. So that's the, that's the, I mean, I can't put it more clear than that. I mean, y'all, y'all hired me to advise you. I'm advising you what is taking place. Now, it's up to you all to take the action. Now, I'm gonna advise you not to violate the constitution, which is your charter.
One, one option, and you talk about options, one option is BDT is willing to accept this council's approval of a resolution for the option.
Well, I think that, that the conflict, Mayor, is that we didn't know, I didn't know anything about the, I'd never seen a platte. I'd never known that the, the land immediately around our municipal center, we were gonna landlock our park. I would not have talked with AT&amp;T and, and Cox Communication and other, other tower vendors about, about putting towers on our land to generate $810,000 over the next 90 years. $9,000 a year for a 100-by-100 plot. I would not have engaged in any of those things. I'm not opposed to, you know, I don't think, I don't think there's any member of this body, the five councilmen or myself, who could actually go out there and say, from this stop to this stop to that stop to that, and, and outline the boundaries. We went through a whole process of a master plan with the National Park Service and the state parks on redesigning our parks because we're competitive now with Sterlington and other communities who's, who've invested $13 million, I believe, $16 million, somewhere in there. And we're not competitive anymore. We got three little bitty ball fields out there. And, and we want our parks to be very competitive. So I have not looked at the boundaries of that. And after we straightened this out, I would like to straighten this out. And, and we're, I'm willing to entertain talks with, with the group and look at the platte and see what we, this body is willing to do. You know, maybe there can be something worked out to, we're not, we're pro-business, we're pro-development. We want the USDA to feel good about us. I was in, took a picture with Dr. Castile today and, and Ms. Mary Kirk. We love the USDA real development. We want housing. We supported Steve Perry and his latest deal with, we assisted with all the technical help we could with sewer and street and all of that. We got the engineers. So we're not anti-anything. But this was done illegally. And, and I, I'd like to look at as we, I would like permission to do this. And BSD can come up here tomorrow or the next day and talk about this and we can, I'm willing to call another meeting. But, but.
May I ask this one question? You talked, I think you said that AT&amp;T, which evidently stimulated this whole investigation and delving into this. But because they, before AT&amp;T, nobody ever talked about the problem, the property.
I don't think anyone knew about it. I don't think anyone knew about it. That's why we didn't talk about it.
Well, the city has known for years that it owned the property. But my question is this, AT&amp;T is asking for 100-by-100 square, is it on the city's property or is it on the Wilson property?
It's on the city's property.
It is on the Wilson.
We're only talking about the city's property.
Okay. I, I didn't know if, if, if definitely plot had been, been established.
Well, we talked about right behind the municipal center.
Well, if it's right behind the municipal center, BDT, it would be willing to take that section out.
Well, are you sure?
Yes.
You're 100% sure?
Right behind the municipal.
Well, 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 we hadn't, it depends on, we hadn't gotten the correct coordinates yet. Now, it depends on, wait, hold it, hold it. We ran, I ran some, some analysis based upon FAA rules. I did a straight line, a straight line off a runway 134 to the properties and tried to analyze and had discussions, technical discussions with AT&amp;T about, about the FAA rules and to make sure it's not in our conical, you know, we got this conical 20-to-1 slope deal. So we did a lot of technical talk. And, and, and what I would like to do is, is
I think that's sounding what we have.
I, I think people need to weigh in. And, and I think that we can start, we can start what they first, because this is annulity. No, we gotta get this straight. Gotta get this straight and then we'll, we, we're open. Yes, we're an open body.
That's an idea, good idea, but you can't discuss it tonight.
Right, right, yeah.
Say that again, Howard.
I would say those are options.
Yes, those are options.
But we can't address that tonight. We have to either fix this and then look at the options that are available.
Diane, is there another plan in there?
Right now, we need to get mayor approval to look into.
So, I'll make the motion.
Counselor, do you have any comments?
Because they can act on it.
Yeah. They can pay ten thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, they can be theirs.
Someone can challenge that, counsel. Any citizen can challenge that and say you did something. Anyone can bring it to court.
The municipal center?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, tell me if they want that, but if he wants this behind the municipal center.
So, let's fix it then. Let's give mayor the permission to go ahead and get it fixed. Yeah, so right now, we need, I made a motion, so anybody going to second the motion?
Okay, let's wait, let's not rush, let's wait until councillor gets you talking.
I mean, we agree, we've got to get it fixed. I mean, y'all don't even know. That's kind of like disrespect.
Do you have a problem? Are you interested in the piece directly behind the municipal center?
Well, let me state, Mayor Hawkins, we are waiting on the FAA's clearing area. And when I say behind, I meant in the proximity. I didn't mean down the road. And, and that hadn't been set yet. We had until Tuesday, there was a deadline. AT&amp;T said, you've got to get it in by Tuesday. You've got to get it in. Now, did we call a special meeting for that? We called a special meeting because Tuesday was the deadline. There were three properties that we, two other properties that we were competing with. And I knew nothing about BDT, absolutely nothing. But I don't want to reserve a hundred by a hundred next, behind it, and they say, oh, we got to offset by two hundred and fifty feet. And there we are again with nothing. This eight hundred and ten thousand dollar minimum rental is important to the city also, just like the hundred and twenty thousand. There are not every other site that's available, and I know a twenty-three acre site, I think, that's in the city that's available. I know a forty acre site that's in the city that's available.
That one just outside the city, off of Boswell.
There's a piece directly beside the, when the municipal center and then the cooking area, there's a driveway, and then there's a strip of property beside that, that the city cuts, that's yours. And it's more than a hundred by a hundred. So, you have that, and you have other property that...
Well, if they came back and said, if they came back and said, hey, this right over, if you look at, if you run a line, if you get on Google Maps and right-click and say, measure, and you click the front of the north end of runway three, four at the airport, and you go directly north, do, I mean, follow that three hundred and forty degrees, it goes right over the municipal center. So, I was worried about an offset, Mayor. I did that, and it was one point some miles, seven thousand or so feet. You know, I did my due diligence, but then knowing that, knowing the FAA and tower space, and you've got to have clearance, and I looked at the twenty to one conical and did all kind of calculations myself.
You're beyond me right now.
Well, I'm just telling you what I did. I did that. I took out the airport plans and looked at the conical, and we've got these three slopes, ones are twenty to one conical, twenty foot, one foot rise, twenty foot, one foot rise. So, an airplane coming in, you can't have towers at the end of the runway. So, I was concerned about FAA requirements, and often you can offset by, these things are so critical, you can offset by three hundred feet, and we're right in the BST property, probably, three, four hundred feet. And then we deprive the city of, you know, of the ability to do that. And then the public should have been involved to, you know, that's another thing, the public should have been involved. And I'm, and if you were sitting in this chair, you'd feel the same way. The public should have been involved. There should have been public hearings, there should have been full disclosure saying, this is what we want to do. I know you said town east or there was property that's already low income. And, and, you know, we needed to have the public get up and say, I'm opposed, I'm for. And we need, the councilman need to see that and hear that from the public saying, I'm opposed, you know, for whatever reason, but you know, there are things that go in. I know who plays in the park. And I know when you put housing so close to a park where there's a sixty-foot road dividing the housing and the park, then naturally the public should be able to voice their approval or disapproval, and then the board could just vote based upon input.
With all due respect, Mayor, that's not, that's not an issue with me.
Okay.
I grant. And the situation is, the previous mayor should have done blah, 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 blah.
Yes.
That's what we need to be working on.
Previous, previous.
And that's what this resolution is about, Mayor. That's why we're saying, this is the question. To me, it's an annulity. And, and, and...
And this council has to carry out its fiduciary duties and responsibilities, but I still say...
I can understand.
That if AT&amp;T had not come, and we built that property, it would have gone on without any issue at all. It would have gone on, it would have rocked on, there wouldn't have been all this investigation.
Well, let me ask you this, Mayor.
And my point is, we did what we were supposed to do.
But let me ask, let me ask you this about that point. You're aware that any citizen could come up, and we got citizens who combed through and would look for stuff.
I'm not...
No, but I'm saying, you said that nothing would have happened, but the possibility exists that some citizen would have done his due diligence and looked back and say, where did this contract come about? And found a flaw and challenged the sale as an annulity.
But Mayor, you know in this job, and we're going into another direction.
Yes, sir.
Anything that a public body does, Mr. Pierre, I can attest to that. Anything that a public body does can be challenged.
Right.
Is that true, Mr. Pierre?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Anything, so, you know, I accept that.
Yes, sir.
So, whatever decision you make will be fine. I hope that you'll appreciate the fact that sixty units of housing was going to be built for farm-related individuals. That would be subsidized properties, first-class housing, more than three, between three to five million dollars. And these folks who risked their lives every day going to Conagra, whatever they're called, Foster Farms, wouldn't have to be unsure of a safe environment when they left their homes. We thought about moving in Farmerville, but I said, why not consider Bastrop? The mayor of Farmerville wanted us to do it over there, but, you know, I'm a believer in Bastrop. I've got fifty-plus years invested here, my life, my family. So, that's why this was chosen. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And, and we do not take that lightly of what the consequences of this might be. We're for, we're for development, we're for housing, but this seems to be an annulity on its face. And it goes against our constitution, which we said we would uphold.
One last question, Mr. Pierre, I asked, did you have to do this tonight? And so, that's going to be another question. Did you have to do that? Will Ms. Prince have a chance to speak? Because she is unaware that this is going on. She was not informed, nobody. I just happened to be in Bastrop and found out through the announcement that this was happening. I would not have known. So, and she needs to know that evidently the previous mayor violated the law and is depriving her and her organization of, well, you know the rest of it.
Mayor, this is just authorizing me to terminate the option to purchase real property. It's a position that, you know, I'm sworn to protect the city and, and to uphold the constitution. And this is just to protect the city and uphold the constitution. It did not say that this would ever get done. It's authorizing us to do it, and we're trying to, the reason I called this special meeting is because this could be done if someone brings us a check tomorrow for a hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct, counsel?
That's what the option agreement says.
Yes. So, therefore, you know, you know, we work for the city, all six of us here, and we want development, we want progress. We're not trying to impede progress. We just want to do things right, follow the charter. And now, now, you know, we could, this, I'm just asking for the authorization to terminate the option to purchase.
Before you make a motion, so just, Mr. Pierre probably can explain this better than I. So, if the council votes to give you the authorization, that means that the fate of this project is in your hands.
Don't put it like that. Let's put it this way. It's in all of our hands, Mayor. It's in BST's hands.
But if he, if the authorization is, Mr. Pierre, speak to that, please.
What the resolution is attempting to do is to give the mayor the authorization to protect the interests of the city. And specifically, with respect to the interests of the city, knowing by advice of counsel that the signed document may lack legal efficacy, as such, he would instruct me to immediately send a communication by email, which is going to go out in about five minutes after y'all see what y'all going to do. I'm not going to wait for y'all to finish the council meeting so that a check can be transmitted to your account. And I'm going to go immediately and send an email to Ms. Prince advising her of our intention to terminate the contract. So, any monies transmitted post that time would be in bad faith, knowing clearly that what our intentions are. And remember, gentlemen, when I posed the question whether or not BDT had met its minimum obligation under the contract since April of two thousand and seventeen of ten dollars per month, our clerk has indicated that not one ten-dollar payment had been made.
My question, as asked before, councillor. How much time do we got before we start? Obviously, you're going to send an email immediately, right?
Well, if you also instruct, if you all authorize the mayor, his direction is to me, and my direction, I mean, my order will be to go and handle the business as you all have requested or as he's requested because he directs my path. Now, with respect to that, when you say how much time, the option agreement says that any time during his time, if they tend to a hundred thousand dollars, that's acceptance of the offer.
Well, gentlemen, have no fear that organization doesn't have a hundred thousand dollars to pay you, not at this point.
I can't take that.
No question about that. So, let's, we're not going to pretend.
So, we need a motion.
Depending on making a loan for the amount, there is not a hundred thousand dollars. So, that's something that's not there. Basically, and you use lawyer terms, if this council authorizes the mayor, he can terminate this whenever he decides to. It boils down to that. If that's his decision, if his decision is to let it flow, that's his decision. But once you authorize him to do what's, whatever he, you know, whatever.
Well, Mayor, I would, I would come back to this body and communicate, and we're not going to stop the conversation. We're protecting the interests of the citizens of Bastrop based upon our constitution, based upon our charter. And if we're going to do something, we're open to talking with BST and details and every councilman being fully. We're open to discussion. But, but we, that document, as far as I see it, is an annulity. And, you know, the option is an annulity. It, you know, it, it, annulities can't stand. And, no, if BST wants to come quickly, once Mr. Pierre does his email of our intent, naturally things take time. We can't do things tomorrow or the next day or the next day or probably the next week. But the, the position of the city of Bastrop would be the position of the city of Bastrop. And honestly, until, until, well, I won't say that. But, but I just don't, I just don't see where we have, without knowing where, there's no councilman can go out there and say how much land the city of Bastrop, here's our lot, here's where our land stops, and the, or the land that the city's going to keep. I don't know, and no one up here knows. And we were all elected to protect the interests of the citizens of Bastrop, and protecting the interests of the citizens of Bastrop is also developing. There's two sides to this, protecting the constitution, protecting our charter, and also promoting development. We would like to promote development. So, I would just ask that the council...
May I make one request?
Yes.
If the council decides to give you authorization, I would respectfully request, as I mentioned in my, in my opening statement, Ms. Prince, and this is no facade, she flew out of Memphis this morning to Tulsa, Oklahoma. She's at Cancer Centers of America facility there undergoing scans to see whether her cancer is in regression or what this status is.
Right.
That give her an opportunity to come and speak to you before you do anything that has finality to it.
If I may?
Yes.
Like you all are duty-bound, and I appreciate Mayor Hawkins just represented, you know, I mean, and also compassion could mean a lot. But I am, I am duty-bound to protect your interests. And my malpractice carrier won't let me not do it. You follow me? So, at the end of the day, if you all know, and as my position and if your position is to authorize the mayor, you know, to try to right the ship, and he directs me to make the first step to right the ship, then of course I cannot sit back and not do it. Now, I would instruct Mayor Hawkins to ask Ms. Prince not to read her email until she leaves, but I mean, at the end of the day, I'm duty-bound, you know, because I have to follow the law as well. And I cannot put you in a financial jeopardy and put myself in a financial jeopardy.
Well...
I don't know how to say it other than that.
Yes. Well, I would not want to send an email to Ms. Prince today based upon, based upon the, the situation here. You know, we have to look at, what's that now?
I said we need to send it today.
Well, well, I'm saying that we can give notice. We can give notice by mail to Mississippi. That's...
Would you consider having, would you consider...
He was wrong by not doing it. So, she was not wrong.
That's right.
Yeah, we're not trying to cause, we don't want to cause any, any, you know, I can definitely put, we need to have some empathy here. There's nothing wrong with empathy. There's nothing wrong with empathy.
I want you all to be clear.
Yes.
Because, I mean, because I need to be clear on the record, okay?
Yes.
You're sending it tonight, yeah.
Yes. Counselor, we understand, we understand that you're giving us the best advice from a legal standpoint to protect the city. How we give notice, how we give notice, the matter of this, this tape is, is evidence that we are taking action. And notice is, Mayor Hawkins, I believe him to be a truthful man, and he has indicated that we're not going to get a hundred thousand dollar check in the mail within a week or two. So, I'm satisfied that we go on record.
Unfortunately, you don't get the authority to do that, Mayor. And I'm not going to ever tell you don't have the authority to do that. But you are duty-bound to protect the citizens of Bastrop. And when you were elected, you agreed to uphold the constitution. If this body says that that particular action was inappropriate and you should take whatever measures you need to do to protect the city of Bastrop.
I have a question, Pierre.
Let me ask you.
Do you, do you request, I have a question. Pierre, do you advise us? Hey, Pierre. Hey, Pierre.
Permission to speak freely.
Hey, Pierre, do you advise us to send an email tonight?
Naturally.
Once you authorize the mayor...
So, if I'm going to make a motion, then that's why...
But, but the mayor, but authorizing the mayor to do this also says the mayor can say, please send this email. Let me review it, and please send it. Okay, I can have the prerogative to do that now.
Right.
Now, now, I just feel that we're not going to get a hundred thousand dollar check within the next couple of days, okay?
Let us do our job.
Yes, do your job, and I'll do my job. Go ahead, Mayor, go ahead, sir.
May I just draw a comparison? To say that we feel, based upon representation... To say that we feel, based upon representation of Mayor Hawkins, and we all believe him to be a truthful man, that we're not gonna get a check tomorrow, is tantamount to saying we feel that what Arthur Jones did was correct, and it bound the city of Bastrop.
I agree.
You have that option here.
Right.
You know, the long and short of it is, if this contract doesn't give you an out, only way I can try to get you out is to let them know right now that we want this contract terminated based upon those issues. Now, here's the thing, if you don't, you know, who's gonna sit at this council meeting before this take in, in a couple of weeks, or a few weeks from now, and tell the citizens of Bastrop, "My heart got in the way, and I didn't use my best legal judgment"?
Yeah, well...
The council voting on the resolution, whether you send an email or not, is, is, that's the same statement, am I right or wrong?
Well, the resolution is authorizing the mayor to take action, to, to, really to direct me to take action, essentially, is what this...
Keep him hanging him out there by himself.
What if this council doesn't take any action?
What if it doesn't take any actions? Then I, honestly speaking, I am still, I am still duty-bound.
I will make the motion.
Hear me out. I am still duty-bound as your legal representative to protect your interest, sometimes when you don't see your interest being protected.
Don't y'all concern.
You all don't know about all the stuff I do every day. You follow me? Now, if I had to come here every time and ask you, "Should I answer these interrogations?" No, I don't. But I'm telling you right now, when, when, upon viewing this document, and I took you, reason why I put those documents in order, because I was trying to paint a picture. You follow me? At the end of the day, what how we feel about what may or may not happen should not be a guiding factor to how you all act. So the long and short of it is, you, each one of you all took the oath to uphold the ch, the city charter, and to follow the city charter. Only thing I'm telling you all right now is that on April the fifth of two thousand and seventeen, maybe a couple of days before, there were actions taken that were in violation of the charter. And the only thing I'm saying, with, my only thing with respect to this resolution is authorizing the mayor to try to right the wrong.
Let, let me ask a question, Counselor. Um, before we got these smartphones, and before all of this stuff, uh, what was a normal way to notify a person?
By way of mail?
Registered.
Registered mail?
Right.
But now, but, but it's, it's not qualified, that we have to use. April the fifth, they send an email? Why we can't send an email today?
Well, that should be, you know, I'll make the decision. And, and honestly, I would be satisfied with a certified letter, uh, mailed to the Mississippi, is it the Mississippi Corporation?
It's gonna be dated today?
And, and any dissenters, and, look, any dissenters, the election, the election for mayor is April the twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. So if there's anyone dissenting, you have a right to move into the city of Bastrop and run. But, go ahead.
What I was gonna say is, you know, we got an obligation to do what's right and best.
Right.
And this is something we just gotta correct.
This is, this is...
But now, in doing that, my question is, and Mayor Hawkins, I'd ask you, should we at least notify in, in advance of receiving a registered letter, you know, how, how that is? And, uh...
I think the mayor's saying...
My question is, should we go ahead and let her know tomorrow sometime? What, well, I'd ask...
I'm, I'm going to, because I'm her representative, I'm gonna call and let her know that this meeting took place, and if there's action, I'm gonna let her know that. But the official action will come from...
Also, Mayor...
You officially.
Also, Mayor Hawkins, would you sign a piece of document while I come, becoming in front of your city councilmen's?
When, if, if we're, we're going back nine years, my city clerk and my attorney would not have allowed me to do that. And as, as I said in the very beginning...
And that's the point.
In the very beginning, I have not questioned whether or not it was done right or not.
Right.
Okay.
I said, this is an internal problem.
Right.
Right.
And I'm saying, I don't know how, how you would solve the problem. I don't know if Mr. Pierre mentioned going out to bid, if you would go out to bid and allow B D T to come in and bid on the project for an option. I, I don't know how you would do it. And I, I, I fully understand Mr. Pierre's statement about your fiduciary responsibility and you adhering to the mandates of, of the charter of the city of Bastrop.
Mayor, I call for the previous, previous, I'm sorry, Mayor. But we, we, we kicking this scan down to what I called for the previous motion.
I don't think you have a second.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Shaw. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Locke?
Aye.
Four to zero, Mayor.
The Moore motion carries. Item, thank you, Mayor Hawkins. Um, item five, resolution eighteen dash seventeen ninety-eight, a resolution of the mayor and board of all, and for the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to make application through the U.S. Department of Justice for funding through JAG program, twenty eighteen technology to fund purchase of body cameras for the, uh, Bastrop Police Department. This is Chief Campbell and Ms. Goldman.
Mayor, Board of Alderman, uh, the deadline is for tomorrow. I was notified by this grant that has been put on through Motorola and the Department of Justice through their grant management system. Uh, I've already started the grant process and asking for the board's permission and the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Department of Justice for this money. It's ten thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars, I think, sitting out there, that the city of Bastrop qualifies for if we go through the grant process, monies that can be used to buy B W C's body worn cameras. I know that Councilman Locke has asked me, ever since I've been chief, and a couple of other councilmen, of where we were with it, put it in the budget for this year, councilman to pay for the whole gist of it out of the budget, but then found this money sitting out there for us, so try not to miss the boat.
May I make a motion that we accept the resolution, um, eighteen seventeen ninety-eight?
Second.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved by Councilman, um, Locke, seconded by Councilman Moore, that we accept this resolution. Oh, and discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution, uh, the resolution passes, uh, is adopted.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Count, uh, Chief, thank you.
Appreciate it, Chief.
Uh, eight, resolution eighteen dash seventeen ninety-nine, a resolution of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to retain the professional services of Tamika Farrell to be the project coordinator and to manage all aspects of the feasibility study on the Ditto Building. Uh, in the grant, we had to name individuals or, or vendors or contractors that would do certain parts of the feasibility study, you know, we did get a grant from the U.S. D.A. Rural Development to do a feasibility study to, uh, place an aquaponics or hydroponics operation in the Ditto Building. We anticipate that we'll, uh, we'll have, uh, jobs growing out of this project, but we've got to prove that the project will work, and we've got to find the pieces, put the pieces together. Ms. Farrell has, um, um, she has a degree in, in agriculture economics, as well as a ma, from Southern University, as well as a master's degree in, um, agriculture education from the University of Iowa State University. And, and we need a project manager, and, uh, she is the only one that I, I think she's capable, I know she's capable, she's the only one that, that I'm aware of that's close, uh, because we wanna hire Morehouse Parish people as much as possible.
Well, Mayor, Mayor, I got a, I want a question to the council.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I've been knowing Mr. Mika a long time, nothing against her, love her family, but my question was an ethical concern with me. Now, I do know you can't hire nobody directly, you know, that's associated for the work for the city. But at the same time, Mr. Gray is public works. So public works, obviously, is building and maintenance.
Yeah.
So ultimately, he still would be...
I posed that question, yeah, I sent an email to the Ethics Board, uh, to ask that question, and, and I had, uh, I disclosed that today to Dr. Castile, who is the, who has Mayor Hawkins' job. She was the Trump appointee for Ma, Mayor Hawkins, just said that his tenure ended with Obama and, and Dr. Castile. So I posed that, that, and let Dr. Castile know that we have a public works director who is, who is, um, who will not have direct supervision, and she is, and, and I stated that if there is a problem, then this will not be done.
Can we attach that email to the resolution?
Oh, you can attach, we can, we can make the language, you know, per, Counselor. But...
We have not received, I went to check, we have not received an answer to that.
Yeah, yeah, but I did.
And, and another thing, I don't know about her qualification, what experience do she have? Has she done this before? That's my thing, L E D, losing economic development, they got people to do feasibility study, am I right or wrong, Counselor?
So can we see the contract service agreement?
Okay, so that's my point.
Well, we made an application to the U.S. D.A. to do the rural development. We're also talking with, with, uh, L E D, and the L E D person that we turned it to, counsel, said, "I don't know what aquaponics is, I gotta go study it up myself." This is such, wait, let me, this is so new, until there's nobody here with the experience. No one has the experience. We have consultants, we have, uh, R S T, uh, bio...
What is her qualification, Mayor? That's all I'm asking.
We're asking her, yeah, we're asking her to not do the science, not do the engineering, but to coordinate. Her, her money will be, it's not a big contract.
Can I see the contract?
What's the dollar, Matt?
We, we don't, it's in the country, it's in the...
What the contract is? Why isn't I attached, why isn't I attached a dollar? See, this one's on our agenda. This should be a text, this should be in our package.
Wait, it was in your package, we gave you the grant application, it was all in it. Her name is in there? Her name's in there?
You don't have the contract, he's saying two of these three, the con, he's gonna have to come back to you with the actual contract.
Contract.
You have the scope of work, which shows contractual...
So we can wait till then?
And the money will come out only the contractual part of that scope of work. You, you have, like, different levels.
So she do the work first? Should she do the work first, then we come back in front of us?
No, no, it's...
Contractual work. Whatever the contract say that she get paid.
So, so we can revisit it, man, to then, right?
Yes, and, 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 and this is why, this is why this is on this. We, yeah, we have to, yes, we have to, and, and her name has been on here from day one.
I didn't see.
Well, you got a copy of the, uh...
I can see another copy.
I'll give you the live binder, address, and the, and the key...
Mr. Norwood said we gotta come back with another contract anyway.
Wait, wait, here's the thing, we have to start, wait, we have to start before Septem, by September first.
Well, I make a motion, Mayor.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna have another meeting before we start, and we can't start without the director.
I said, I made the motion, we can go over to table, it don't make no difference to me.
I make a motion, we can table it.
Well, well, let me, let me state something. What you're doing is tying our hands not to start the project when the U.S. D.A. say we have to start it, okay? That's why we put it on here, is because we have to start, is that true, Ms.?
You said, you said we have a, hold on, Ms. Norwood, you said, you have a small, you have a smartphone, so you can pull up your email.
Okay, um, um, yes, we have to start the feasibility study, um, by September the first.
That's it.
Now, any changes that has to be done to the scope of work, we have to submit it back to U.S. D.A. If she's not gonna be the one that's over the project, we have to submit a change on who that would be, if she's not approved to the ethics.
Right, right.
Because we do need to get those...
Yeah, that's my, that's my...
The table.
We just, I know, Mr. Green, we just left the ethics board.
She's a wonderful person.
So the thing about it, nothing against her, but indirectly, I know he's the mayor, he says on it, but Gray is over public works regardless. So indirectly, he still could be her supervisor.
We're waiting on an answer from ethics.
I agree.
Yeah, and we, and look, we, I will send you a copy of the email that I sent Ethics. Uh, I explained to them that Mr. Gray was the, uh, is, is, is currently the public works director, and I, I, I gave them detail of that, and also disclosed that with the U.S. D.A. in a meeting with Dr. Castile today, okay? To let them know, I had a meeting with she and Ms. Mary Clerk, uh, who's one of the program managers, who is our program manager for this.
Dr. Castile, is she over the ethics board though, Mayor?
No, 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 we, we told her that we were contacting Ethics.
We need to contact the Ethics.
We did, we did, yes.
Contact someone over the Ethics Board?
We did that, I did that, I'll send you a copy of the email, I'll forward it to...
Okay, so you, you emailed two people.
No, no, I emailed the Ethics Board asking for the question, asking the question.
So how, the, the resolution on number seven and number eight, are they gonna be in place before she takes, if she, if we...
She man, she manages them, the project manager manages them, and coordinates the other efforts of the person who's writing the, putting all the data and statistics, and doing the feasibility study, that part, and the one that's doing the biology part, the, the bio, uh...
She's a wonderful person, I like to me. Yeah. But we got, we got to stay legal. I wanna see the contract agreement.
Yeah.
Diane, we also, it'd be great to have a job description, what is she gonna do besides...
I said that day one, at the city council meeting, about job description.
And then we get the Ethics Board, and if all that clears...
Just need to get the whole copy of the binder, that's in the, uh, grant proposal.
It's on, it's online, we can give you a link to it, and you just click on it, and we'll give you the key, the whole, everything that we submitted.
So where, where, where are we at tonight? Where are we at tonight? 'Cause we just, just spinning our wheels, where are we?
That's mine, that's on vote on this, we table it.
Until we get something from the Ethics on...
Okay. Yeah, and based upon them, we'll come back and change it, but we need a person in place since we have to start by, by September first, we need a person in place who's gonna coordinate. And if there, we've already asked the question, and I'll be glad to share my email to Ethics, uh, with you. And we've full disclosure with the U.S. D.A., in a meeting with Ms., with Dr. Castile, who's a wonderful person, I told Ms. Lenore today, I said, "That's gonna be a United States senator one day."
Okay.
Okay, I'll stop that, okay. All right.
Like you say, on number six, you can table, and then we just have to come back, just from that one, and then the other two, or it's no problem on the...
The other two? Can we go ahead and do the other two tonight?
Yes, yes.
Can we move, or are we gonna take...
Well, it's like, Counsel, Counsel, can we go and do the other two?
You can, but just, just, just be cognizant of your deadline.
That, that's what I'm saying.
Which means you probably have to call another special meeting next week.
Well, you know, we do, we used to.
Yeah, we used to, and I don't mind.
We used to.
I'm flexible.
We, we...
Okay, we'll table it one.
Every week, you know, I mean, it's fine.
So, Counsel, also, can we have a, no contract agreement?
Well, no one can, you're not earning it.
Thank you. Every week is fine.
Man, I, I moved that we table, uh...
It's been moved that we table...
I second that motion, Mayor.
It's, uh, it's been seconded, moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Moore, that we table item...
Six.
Six? And now, item seven?
Seven and...
Uh, uh, okay.
Item six.
Item six, okay. Now, we got a motion, and a second, do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The, uh, item six is tabled. Item seven, resolution eighteen dash eighteen hundred, a resolution of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to retain the professional services of Dunhill Corporation to provide business analysis and economic and health impact of the commu, community for the feasibility studies of Mississippi Farm. That's done feasibility studies for, uh, for, uh, other organizations before. And, uh, and, uh, that's the one that's been guiding us through the process of, of this.
So do we have, do we have on hand the, the contract service agreement for that one as well?
The contractual is in the scope of work that you all received, and what they're gonna do is give us a, a contract, and it's gonna be based on what, how much work they do between the three people.
So once they see it, then they just...
Yeah, you're not, you're not talking a lot of money, one of them is like eight thousand dollars.
So right now, so right, hold on, right now, we'll vote?
I'm, I'm saying we vote...
And then they'll give us a price later?
Mm-hmm, just put these people in place. No, if they don't bring a contract, and this contract is coming back to you.
So can we vote in?
So let me ask you.
Well, I, well, I got a question, I got a question, Counsel, Ms. Diane.
Yes.
Well, that is the case, but why can't they do everything?
Because you have to have somebody over...
Coordinating.
Yeah, coordinate.
It has different pieces.
Now, Ms., Ms. Diane, how are we gonna, how are we paying for this? We don't have the grant yet, do we?
Yes.
Yes.
We have the grant.
It's all coming out the grant, the money's coming out, it's not coming out the city budget, is it?
It will, but it is a grant.
Into the grant, huh?
Okay.
What day did it get approved, Ms. Diane? What day did it get appro, approved?
Oh, I don't have that here, she sent us that, what, two weeks ago?
Probably.
I get a copy of that and send?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Two weeks ago. And, uh, we have to go ahead, and the reason I say these two, we got to get them to come down, we got to, like, start. They have to come in with the work and what's got to be done, so that we can start on September one.
I make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Moore, seconded by Councilman, um, Locke, that this resolution be adopted, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The motion, the motion carries, Resolution eighteen dash eighteen hundred is adopted.
Man, could I, could I make a statement?
Yes, sir.
On, on all three of these, uh, resolutions...
You have no agreement, y'all just signed this up.
We're engaging people to do work, we're not, we hadn't done a contract with them yet that some certain...
In the resolution, it give you the, it give you the permission to have the final, the final say-so.
That's what, if, if you read the grant, Mr. Green, we gave you the grant. We gave you all the pages of the grant, and it stated all of these people in the grant when we asked you to approve us applying for the grant. We supplied everyone with the grant. I can give you the online, we have a live binder that we built that, that describes the building, you remember, showed you the building and the flowers?
Man, could I finish, can I, can I finish?
Well, it's a tab, it's a tab to the right, okay.
I'll look at it over here.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
A roll call, Mr. Goldman.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Locke?
Yes.
Three to one.
Three to one, I have it, thank you. The resolution is adopted. Resolution eight, Resolution eighteen dash eighteen oh one, a resolution of the mayor and board of all persons for the City of Bastrop to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to retain the professional services of RST Bioscience, uh, to re, to research modeling and evaluation of the feasibility study on the Ditto Building. Uh, this is RST, they've been working with us for months, they've been to town to Bastrop on several occasions, been through the Ditto Building, and, uh, these people are working for pittance. A, a feasibility study for one firm can cause, can run into the tens of thousands, you know, for one piece of this.
They're working for what?
Pittance, they're working way below cost.
How much is that?
Pittance, just, uh... Just, just one part.
Ma, Mayor, Mayor, let, let, let me say this.
Go ahead.
That building been sitting there for twenty-some years, just sitting there. And it's not in any of you all's district, but the people in my district are tired of that building just sitting there.
Thank you, sir.
And we sit here, and we're going back and forth over something that's, that's gonna be paid by a grant. We need to do something with that building just sitting there. Now, we sitting up here arguing about something that doesn't even make sense. May I move for the resolution?
Okay.
Second the motion, Mayor.
It's moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Moore, that we adopt the Resolution eighteen dash eighteen oh one. Um, any discussion?[1750.71]